Good evening, I'd like to call the February 26, 2020 School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first order on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which with which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is we can ratify by consensus the agenda for February 26. Any concerns with the agenda as written? Motion by Chris and a second by Don. Any further discussion? Ready vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous? No public comment? Go on once, go on one. Public speak. Superhetty. And the next item on the agenda is Representative for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, Roxanne. Are you ready? Fifteen minutes early?
I'm ready.
Moniquey Suck. I'm Roxanne Mills Brown, the Education Director for the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. And I've just brought a few updates for you. I know if we've kind of presented information that was just most day-to-day, week-to-week. But as you're all aware, we have a partnership with the Mashpee and Barnstable Public School Districts, which is the Native Youth Community Project, NYCP. And there's four goals involved with that. It's improving SAT scores by seventy-five percent over the four-year life of that project. Instilling life skills is a second goal or objective. And there are pre- and post-activity surveys for parents and students. The third objective is college and career planning through increasing the rate of college acceptance and attendance by ninety-five percent for tribal students, as well as increasing the internships that our students participate in by fifty percent. The last and fourth objective in that college and career readiness goal is increasing knowledge of the Wampanoag culture. And part of that was having our students participate in the Wampanoag coursework, which is in its third year of implementation this year. And I think Mashpee School District is to be applauded for that. The second piece to that evaluation was to get our children more familiar with hunting and fishing and gun safety. And we're in the fourth year of a four-year grant, so this is the last year of implementation. John Hanlon did attend a conference in Denver last week. He received technical assistance and development assistance. We hope to be able to submit a new application for funding, hopefully partnering with Mashpee, doing a more effective job in working with the kids and working with the staff, so that we really can make a difference in the lives of our kids. To provide that support and encouragement, just give them a little boost during the course of their schoolwork and their looking forward to the future. And so we'll be getting with Patty and the principals and working on that. We had a little more difficulty working with Barnstable High School, and so that will be something that we will redirect our attention to and maybe come up with some more effective ways to actually get in the door there.
You know, maybe there's a way for us to facilitate sort of a combined meeting at some point.
Well, that's a great idea. Thank you. Okay. So, we also have a partnership with Cape Cod Community College, which started in March of 2019. We started out with twenty-five in attendance approximately. Since then, the focus, which was quite broad, has narrowed to the development of a Native American history course, and possibly one where high school kids could get dual credit, college credit while in high school. We developed a strategic recruitment effort of high school graduates and GED recipients. And we've also been able to recommend vetted cultural resource experts to work with different professors and instructors at the college, much the same as we have with Mashpee High School, which now has a Native American history course. Linda Coons is the cultural consultant for that. And we very much appreciate, Brian Brody is a part of this partnership, and it's been most valuable. So we appreciate, you know, his time with us there. In June of 2019, we submitted an application to the Administration for Children and Families for a thirty-five-capacity childcare center. In October, we got approval to construct, to build. We're building it over off of Meeting House Road in the Wampanoag Village housing area. And we just hired in January a project construction manager. And we're at the, we have a feasibility study, we have a schematic, we have the location, we have two-thirds of the funding and expect to get the other third. But we're in the preliminary stages of working with the architect and ensuring that the site is prepared to begin laying foundation. So that's where we're at now, but we're pretty excited. Thirty-five children ages six weeks to five years. And we look at tribal children, Native American children, and other community children as well, depending on, you know, applications, enrollment, and so forth and so on. So we're figuring out curriculum. We have three teacher trainees that are currently working with the language program at the tribe and the school, the Makayasak Wicu School, to be able to continue studying the language, but also learn more about child development. The next part of that is, we also have a partnership with, through the Cape Cod Community College Partnership, one with the Early Childhood Program. So they have a grant, and these three trainees are able to take coursework for teaching, administration in early childhood, or even to get their AA and move forward at no cost to them. So they're doing that now in preparation of the opening of our childcare center. As the tribal chairman was not able to participate, I did agree to be a tribal representative on the Mashpee School District Planning for Success Strategic Planning Committee. We met on February 4th, and we have a meeting, I think the next one is on March 10. Okay. And then lastly, I and Eileen, who is the program manager for childcare services for the tribe, met with Principal LaBelle and Hope to get their perspective on how they saw our tribal children as far as school readiness, when they come in, not just to pre-cave it into kindergarten. And we thought, we do have funding for what we call quality initiatives. Some of our children go to home-based or center-based childcare centers, but many of them stay with grandparents or aunts and uncles, not so much uncles, but aunts and grandmothers. And we really wondered, are they getting the benefit of social interaction and some of that readiness for math, for reading? Are they getting read to? And do they have a lot of language use and processing and receptiveness? And so we met with Hope and Paul, and they were very helpful in that discussion. And I do just appreciate you guys taking the time to sit with us and fitter all that out. It turns out that we probably don't need to do much right now, but we're more than ready to be able to jump in and help at any time in that regard. So that's the presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a question, just out of curiosity. Given the program that we have here at the public schools in regard to pre-cave, are you finding a good version of Wampanoag children attending that? Or are you thinking that there's a significant number who are not taking advantage of that program?
I believe there may be a good number that are not taking advantage of it. And I think that was part of our question, because we have seen kids who have stayed with grandparents, and although they may enjoy books, or they may enjoy video games, they're not getting a lot of physical activity. It's half of one and six of another. And that was our curiosity. What were the, what did the principal see as kids were entering and he was interacting with them? So that might be a push that, you know, that we have, and our childcare center too will hopefully be more readiness involved and not just, you know, the traditional daycare. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I just want to thank you for also volunteering to serve on the interview committee for the Kuhn School Principal. So thank you for that.
Yes, you're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the report of our illustrious student, Representative Skyler Rumpel.
Good evening, everyone. So, as I speak, the boys' basketball team will be getting game-ready for their first playoff game against Westport at Westport at 6:30 tonight. And the team missed the playoffs last year, so they're happy to be back and we support them, so go Falcons. The first project is being led by Julie Cabra and the Key Club at Mashpee High School, which the third project is a larger initiative that helps get water to children in countries that need it. And so far, they've raised $2,000, and they're having a dance this Friday to raise more money as well. Megan Pons is leading her senior project, which is about collecting professional clothes for homeless women, which is a really great way to help to break the cycle and get homeless women into, into job opportunities they otherwise might not have. Some students from AP Spanish classes went to Spain together over February vacation, which I'm sure was, as much as it was culturally enriching, I'm sure it was lots of fun. The Hostile Group, which is Health Occupation Students of America at the high school, held a blood drive all day on February 12th, and there were about thirty-one successful donors contributing to local hospitals. And the Hostile students gave out snacks and led registration and helped with other tasks. The Keystone from Boys and Girls Club had a basketball tournament for the community on February 1st, and the Keystone is mostly Mashpee High School students that meet weekly to plan community events and engage in service. And so they had their basketball tournament to raise money for their group, but also they had a lot of teachers from the high school and community members from the police and fire come and play basketball together. And so they gained community engagement and management skills, which are all very important. The International Club has started up at the high school. It's a new club with the French teacher, Madame Pierce, and they had a Mardi Gras party yesterday in her classroom. Along with French, French students are working on what's called a Genius Hour project and every log block, which is about seventy minutes at the middle high school. The students are invited to work on any project that they're passionate about, relating to anything that they're really interested in, as long as it relates to a French-speaking country. So, which are a lot of countries in our world. And so the project that I'm doing is with an organization called Be Like Brit, which helps, it helps orphanages that are led by Brittany Jengels' mother, Sherilyn Jengel, after Brittany died in an earthquake in Haiti, and it's been ten years. And so my friend and I are doing a project related to that. There's other students doing projects related to designer brands made in France and led by French people. And so it's really cool to get students involved in something that they're already passionate about and related to what they're working about. The students in the Sousa Cole play are continuing to rehearse for their performance at the end of next month. The computer science class is working on these dash robots with Ms. Howe, and I'm in this class, and it's a lot of fun and it's interesting, because it's tenth through twelfth grade students that are programming these small robots that we're eventually going to be bringing to some of the yoga schools. And most of the people are, like me, who don't participate in a robotics class or a club, and so it's cool to have that, that alternative, which is a lot of fun. The GSA had a field trip today at Oliver Ames High School with Chef Stolaski and Mrs. DeShawn. There are bulletin boards of senior college acceptances and commitments in the high school hallways, which are a lot of fun to see and supporting our seniors. There will be a civic career day this Friday at the high school for the eighth graders who take a civics class this year, and there will be some local elected officials and other personnel, which will be very interesting. And lastly, I wanted to highlight the Sandy Hook Promise Assembly we had, which focused a lot on the Start With Hello initiative, which is just about being inclusive and checking in on people and just being kind whenever you can.
Thanks, Skyler. All right, next item on the agenda is the question at school shareout.
Thank you for having us, and I'm so excited tonight to bring with me three incredibly talented teachers and four remarkable fourth graders. I brought them and asked them to come tonight to share out on Wonders. And Mrs. Schreiner, who is a third-grade teacher, Mrs. McKay, fourth-grade teacher, and Ms. Cohane is our Title I reading teacher, they participated in the pilot for Wonders last year. This is their second year, and they have become teacher leaders within our building for the implementation of this new curriculum. So I really appreciate the hard work that they've put in, but I think they're going to be pretty amazed with our fourth graders in how they have really adapted so well to this. So Shawn, thank you for being here, Mason, Annabelle, and Taylor. So I'm going to turn it right over to our experts.
If you need to move that table a little forward or add more chairs, feel free.
Just to include the kids.
It does seem a little bit.
It's probably a little.
But we can pick it up.
There you go.
You want to get some chairs?
Yeah, I'm going to get some chairs. Well, as you get it, I'm Mrs. McKay, I'm a fourth-grade teacher, and Mrs. Schreiner and myself piloted this series last year. We piloted the 2017 series. And we got boxes and boxes and boxes of materials dropped in September, and we started figuring out what was what. But we realized we had some really good anthologies, some great student work, we had some fabulous leveled readers, and we had an online component, which we never had in reading series before, and that makes such a difference. I'm going to tell you, it took us a while to figure out how to use it, and it still probably does. I did make a copy of what a week looks like for you to see at the beginning, if you care to have one. But so we've learned through doing this. Then when we purchased, and we did an awful lot of work with Hope, the ELA committee, and a whole selection of group between both schools, and lots and lots of questionnaires to know which series we'd pilot. So we set it on Wonders, and frankly, I'm very glad we did, because it just has given us so much. You don't like, what am I doing now? You like, what's the most important thing I need to do to get the best learning for the kids in front of me? And it's being done pretty similarly on our grades, I would have to say. I know on the sixth grade, some of them have gone with the level, with the novels, and it has a great selection of novels that come with it. On fourth grade, we chose to use the novels for win groups, because they're more aligned, the kids have similar skills, so you can take a very high level if you have high kids, and one that does the best teaching for the children right in front of you. But these are the only four kids that actually had it from third to fourth grade, and we asked them to come, and we're so grateful they all did come. So yesterday, I did a quick questionnaire among the kids, what do you like about it and what they didn't like about it, and they will share that with you. I do want to say, from the series, when you look at all the literature anthologies, this is one I've made up, I highlighted a lot of cross-curricular connections, because when you teach all subjects, any two for you get, two subjects, a great novel about Abraham Lincoln, Arizona curriculum, or the movement west because of changing curriculum. So we've had a lot of very great aha, I love that. But the big difference between the 2017 and the 2020 is the pacing. We were always checking in, Mrs. Schreiner, Ms. Cohane, and myself, how do we keep up with this? We're reading a story this week, and we love it. It has an essential question, which every story has, and the essential question is, in what ways can advances in science be helpful or harmful? I mean, that could be a high school thesis type of question, but they're learning about GMO foods and things like that, so it's high interest, high level, they're ready to write their opinions on it. So just, that's just one week. But as I said, we are doing a lot of, and the question is always something you go back to, and they're like, oh, remember when we did that? This connects with that too. So we're working through it wonderfully. I have to give Ms. Cohane so much credit for being the link between all grade levels that can help us implement this better. As it is, we're tweaking testing. We realize we're spending too much time on assessments, and we don't want to spend that much time. We're teachers, we're not testers. So we want to spend our time on using the tests we have, maybe taking one and ripping it apart and working with kids, because they are very, very in-depth, and they have the online component too. And so, as I said, I'll let you hear from the kids, but we've learned a lot from it. Each teacher is doing it reasonably similar, but if you need to take a break, you have plenty of materials too. And I just spoke to Mrs. Johnson, the sixth grade, who opted to do it by novels, and she has her own way of working through it, keeping essential questions, covering materials. So it's obviously a great resource, it's not a one-size-fits-all. And it's so nice to just click the button and know what you're doing next week for a lesson, and move it a day if it didn't work out that day. It's a wonderful resource. I mean, kids have the access, but I'm not going to say anything else. Did you want to add something?
Have the kiddos go first, and then I'll show you a quick little online.
Shawn, come in here.
All right, so are you guys going to say the thing that you like about it, and then the thing that you are not super fond of? Who wants to go first? Shawn, do you want to go first? Go ahead.
What I really like about Wonders, what I like most about Wonders Reading, I really like how they make learning fun. How they make it fun is they do things like make games, educational games, that help you get your vocabulary. Also, it can be, also it can prepare you for the mini tests that they give you about the mini stories.
Yep, and did you say anything you didn't like, or?
Oh, yeah. I said, I don't really care for some of the stories, because sometimes they can be boring, but that's just love.
Okay, you ready, Mason? Go ahead.
What I like about Wonders is that they, they have these games that you can run a lot from, and you can also get ready for tests that we do, and you can read books online. And if you don't have your Wonders book to fill in some answers or something, you can just go on, online and fill in all the answers. And, well, yeah, that's it. I don't really, I actually like everything on there, there's nothing I don't like.
I didn't make him say that. I did.
All right, Annabelle, you want to go?
What I like most about Wonders Reading, the fun books, because if you're struggling, it will read to you, and they are also fun. What I don't really care for, the tests, the simple ones.
Okay, Taylor, you ready?
What I like most about Wonders Reading is that when we start, when we start, there is a fun little video, and when we finish an activity, we can play a game on Wonders.
Is there anything you don't like, Taylor?
The shorter stories.
Taylor was saying that she likes the stories that are longer, because she gets so into them, she wants to really use that story for a bit, and when it's too short, you don't get it as much. I can show you what I really love about Wonders is being in between two grades. It can be tricky, kind of figuring out where I'm supposed to be, but because Wonders gives me access to third grade and fourth grade, if you look at my dashboard, I have third grade teacher edition, third grade student edition for third grade, and then I have teacher edition fourth grade, student edition fourth grade. So if I wanted to see what they're seeing, I can click student edition, I'm going to go to Mrs. McKay's class, and this is exactly what the kiddos see when they go on to their Chromebook. So I heard Mason and Shawn, I think we're both talking about vocabulary. Every week when they go in, there's words to know, and these are all of their vocabulary words for the week, and sometimes when you click them, there'll be like a little video that goes with it to introduce it, which I know the kids have really liked referring back to. The other thing that Mrs. McKay was saying, so if I go to my teacher one, she was talking about the planning aspect, so when I go to my weekly planner, I can see exactly what the may do's and the must do's are for each day. So if I wanted to see where Mrs. McKay was, I know that she's going to be on day two tomorrow, Thursday, and when I do planner options, I can put the core pathway on, and so that's going to keep all of the must do's highlighted, and it's going to fade away any of the extra stuff that you want to do. So for me, it really, really helps, obviously I check in with them daily, but it's nice to know where they're headed, and then we can find two things when we need. So, yeah. And like they said, there's more than you could ever get to, so it's really nice that you can pick and choose what your kids want to do. Anything else that you could say? Mrs. Schreiner?
Mrs. Schreiner. Wow. Actually, what I really like about it is so many times parents will come to me, and as a parent myself, we always want our own child to use that. In this program, there's so many different materials to meet every need you can even possibly come up with. So there's just wonderful, wonderful resources. And, and the way Wonders is organized is that a child who's high, you know, maybe higher level versus the lower level child, they still can read on the same topic, the essential question's still the same, most of the vocabulary is still the same. And then we have an anthology that's thrown in there, where everyone reads the same passage. We have leveled readers, and then we have the anthology, but it's all using the same vocabulary and the same comprehension skill, the same vocabulary skill, spelling and grammar. So even though children are at different levels, Wonders has a really neat way of meeting the needs of that instructional need of the child. Great program. We're thrilled.
Yeah, grateful.
Very grateful. Thank you.
I had a quick question. You mentioned pacing?
Yeah.
So is this something that you need to get used to, or is there?
It did change.
It changed dramatically from, given a unit was five stories into 2017 edition. Ms. Cohane and myself did it, she was in my classroom just as much last year as this year, we're reading the story, and she's like, didn't do that? Do I remember that? When you have two weeks or ten days on a story, you can do all that richer writing that we need to do. That's obviously, again, pulling back on testing, off just road testing, and developing some higher-order question and responses, we need to do that. So having the ten days gives you more focus to do on, on your writing topic, as you're developing it over the course of the ten days and completing it. It was five to five. It was five. We were, and the good news is, we still didn't get those stories out of the anthology. So if you had a high-interest science story, there is one that's written as a graphic novel that's force in motion, all of the vocabulary you would need is in there. I'm going to use that for my science time. So it's not gone. There's a wonderful one, yes, there's a wonderful one about the buffalo returning, it's a whole Gene, Craig, George, about the, what changed the west and the, the population dipping and finding literally three hundred and a herd and bringing it back. So you can take some of that, and I take some of my science or social studies time, and we'll have the anthology or some form of it in front of me, because it's as good as a new text in that area too, even though it's not one of the prescribed stories within the five weeks. So it gives us some leeway, and weeks we were doing testing, we would take it for science or social studies. And we've, lots of teachers are playing around with that different ways, and that's wonderful. It's a research, a bonus resource. But the pacing guide, we have the option to change a day or two if we fall behind, if that's not finished, if it took longer in writing. Literally, if you click the button, you change your calendar, and it'll bring everything back into pace with your day, with the day you're on. You're not, look, I'm on day five and I should be on, I'm on day two and I should be on day five. You make whatever way you want to go.
Mrs. Schreiner, did I understand that the reading is adapted to the students?
Literally, if you click the button, you change your calendar, and it'll bring everything back into pace with your day, with the day you're on. You're not, look, I'm on day five and I should be on, I'm on day two and I should be on day five. You make it whatever way you want to go.
Mrs. Shiner, did I understand that the reading is adapted to the students' reading level?
Yes.
And helps accelerate it?
And then, so especially for the kiddos that are struggling a little bit, Wonders is a really neat way of still allowing them to access higher level learning skills without being read to. You know, there's still reading as well.
Right. Now, everyone's reading the same story, but certain words are different.
Right, there's one word, well, one, there's an anthology that everyone, a story anthology that everyone reads. And then there's many readers that are on, that go along with the theme, so to speak, of that story from the anthology. Those three books, we call it, they're leveled readers, they have the same seven or six or some vocabulary words that Ms. Kohane showed you, but less words around, surrounding the vocabulary words.
And the same covers too.
For the nonfiction.
Fiction have the same covers, the sort of look the same.
Right, right.
So it is less words.
Based upon the usability of the student.
Exactly, and like I think Mason and Sean said, it doesn't even matter if they're holding the book, but they have access to all of the stories, all. I think it's five stories that they're exposed to over the course of a 10-day week. And they have access to them all on their Chromebook, and like Annabelle said, they can read them to them, so they can have their headphones on and listen to it as they go through, and it's really cool. Most times, it highlights as you go. Chapter one, controlling pests. Yeah, it's not one, but it usually. On a go, people gather. So it's nice. So again, they're getting that food and to practice, they're getting exposure to the vocabulary.
And there is one at the, toward the end of the 10-day cycle, they have, they call a level up. So a student is not stuck at the, if you have someone that's showing great success, high interest in this particular topic, let them read all the books. We don't, we're never going to say you can't, so they can go up to the next level, whatever. So they're not just, this is the only one you get to read, we're more fluid in that.
So I have a question, and something, this is just more of a curiosity thing, as we introduce more technology and as generations move on. So I want to ask the students something. When you read a short story or a novel or whatever you're reading, do you prefer to read on the Chromebook, or do you prefer to read something out of a book, physical book?
I mean, if you don't know words, it's a little little key, but your eyes will kind of like get used to like a book other than the screen. Or you could also not use the, make it tell to, tell you. You could also just read it.
Gotcha, thank you. That was curious, that's interesting to hear.
I think one of the things that we have worked a lot on is being, and Mrs. on McKay has discussed this tonight, is not over assessing. There is more in Wonders than we could possibly use, but every unit, at the end of every 10 days, there is a unit assessment that is quite lengthy, was taking almost four days. So we really looked at that, looked at different models, and looked at some of the collaboration we've had with other districts who are using Wonders to try to make it Mashpeeized and questionedized, and really what works for our kids. We know from our data, from MCAS and multiple other sources, we need time with writing. Our kids need to write. And by using that, those four days for a unit assessment, we just were not getting enough time. So we are using the benchmark assessments, and we're using some other interim smaller assessments during that 10-day time. I think it's been really terrific, just to see the collaboration that is building within our own building with the teachers, and thank you so much, ladies, for your work. But seeing the kids engaged with Wonders is really terrific. They are, they have a consumables that they're writing in and writing online. They are engaging in this instruction in multiple ways.
And just for the public's perspective, this curriculum was introduced, um, this year.
We heard, yes, it was purchased over the summer and arrived in full implementation this year. We've been very fortunate to have three professional development days from the publisher. They've come to school, and we've been able to engage in that. And last year, of course, with our piloting, there was other professional development as well, so I really thank Hope for a lot of that work.
Well, and I want to thank the teachers who are here, who are, one of the ways I hooked them was through PDP, no, really, but one of the rules was you have to be the teacher. It wasn't cash, it was candy. I think there was candy, I don't tell the one, this is policy. But was that you all had to be the leaders this year when we implemented, and you have come, you have done that and then some.
Absolutely.
It's the reason it is successful, is because we have you three, and Heather, and then the folks at Coombs also, who piloted last year. So thank you so much. And I think, you don't even know how much you like filled my heart today, made me so happy.
Absolutely.
Can we get a picture of everyone up with the school committee before you all speed up? Is there one of the high-level team in front or something?
Like if you stand behind them, they can.
I can't get you. Oh, there you are. Paul, we thank you so much, thanks for bringing us here.
All right, so now on to some fun admin stuff, so we have the approval of the January 22nd, 2020 minutes. A second to work through that, if you have any questions, comments, or edits.
I'm going to approve the January 22nd, 2020 minutes.
There's one of it, it has to be late, on the last page. Did you want to second it first? Oh, yeah, sure, I'll second it. On the last page, on page three, I don't believe you got done it. Eight AM.
I was making sure that.
That was a stupid one.
I just wanted to make sure you really read them.
I can't.
Thank you.
Second, a motion by Chris to approve the January 22nd, 2020 minutes with edits.
Yes, sir.
Second by Don. Is that how you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, you can answer. All right, reporter, the superintendent.
Okay, so in your packet, you have the reports from each of the principals. I will, I'll wait to inform you of that. So Principal Bell's report for the Coombs School is there, 107 students. And just a note on chronic absenteeism, he shows 22% for 2020, but Desi only records or counts grades one on up, so in the future, we're going to present it with the PK and K broken out, because preschool is, you know, you don't, if you, parents don't feel like, how do you go if you don't play that day, they don't send you. So we want to make sure we give a really accurate chronic absenteeism rate for first and second grade. And just a few of his shout-outs, the school adjustment counselor, Carrie Mole, and the BCPA Mary Kaminsky, they ran a January PD for paraprofessionals at both elementary schools. We're very appreciative of that. Also acknowledging the U.S. Coast Guard and their partnership with grade two in terms of STEM lessons. They are, they're engaging with what they bring into the classroom. Thank you to librarian Meg Smith, reading specialist Jen Kenny, and the PE and Title One teacher, Kristen Daly. They orchestrated the Vacation Reading Challenge Celebration, where 150 students achieved the Winter Challenge goal. Thank you to our teacher, Kim Palmer, and the KC CPTO, they organized the Grade One field trip to the Patuett Center for the Arts, and the PTO paid for it. And then Lynn Harris is one of our Southport Falcons, and she has been the liaison for the Coombs School for the last two years, and she is moving on to a few other things of interest, and Joe Matlack is going to be the new contact for the Coombs School. We're very appreciative for everything that Lynn has done, and she continues to be involved with the schools. Any questions on that report? Then we have the Quashet School report, 465 students in total. You can see the chronic absenteeism rates there as well. Shout-outs to music teacher, Mrs. Hill, music teachers, Mrs. Hill, Mrs. Boyd and the band, Strange and Chorus, they performed at the first concerts of the year. These are all, this is also data related to Jade Ware. Sixth grade teacher, Mr. Williams, and front office administrative assistant, Mrs. Emery, and Quashet School Council hosted a kindness dance on the 24th of January. And also, like Coombs School, Mrs. Richard, the art teacher at Quashet, organized grade four field trips to the Patuett Center for the Community Arts, which is an absolutely wonderful resource that is nearby and very beneficial to our students. On January 26th, no, on January 6th, 26 students were inducted into the Quashet School National Elementary Honor Society, and a shout-out to Mrs. Babbitt, she was a fifth grade teacher and also the advisor to that organization. And I believe those names were in the last article that was published in the Enterprise as well. And then also, the Energy Fest was held on January 22nd. This is a great collaboration between Mashpee High School students, Cape Cod Compact, where they come and take on the role of teachers at various stations, 22 to be exact, and our students at Quashet run through and do some hands-on learning. It's always been a very well-received and enjoyable experience. Any questions on that? So we have the report of the Mashpee Middle High School, Principal Ross Raci. I did give him permission to attend tonight's basketball game, that is why he's not attending this event, so he should be texting us with progress throughout the meeting. No, well, it doesn't start till 6:00. 736 students, and some of his acknowledgements to Carolyn Bohm, she is a student, she was, she's an art student, being selected for a journey panel in the third annual Massachusetts Amazing Emerging Artists Recognition. And so some of her work is on display at the State Transportation Building in Boston. This year's science fair was very successful. Thank you to Stephanie Sores and the Science Department for hosting it, it was on January 16th. These students received awards for their projects, Caitlin Sines, Skylar Rempel, who's here, Cheyenne Hendricks, Kaylee McCarthy, Katrina Mann, Isabella Egan, Samantha Rosum, Ally Links, Sydney Puchel, Taylor McCaba, Brady Fraser, Colton Collarin, and Bailey Hueson. And also shout-outs, not in the report, but to the community members who volunteered to judge those projects. That's an outstanding partnership there. And then congratulations on the first choral concert this year. We have a new choral teacher, Miss Emma Mills, and it was definitely a different feel to the concert. She did an outstanding job, but the performers all had solos, and it was really one of those events that we wished didn't end after an hour or so, it was so good. And then in collaborative, a collaborative effort of the Mashpee Middle High School Human Rights Club, MMHS Art, Music, English History, and World Language Departments, was the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Day, and then also, they also work with the Town of Mashpee's Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and it was a day on January 24th in the auditorium. And there was a guest speaker as well, Pamela Shaterton-Thirty, who shared her artwork, icons of the civil rights movement, as well as her personal story of raising an mixed race family and how she became involved with the civil rights movement. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Any questions on that report?
Does the chronic absenteeism show for 18 and 19? The others, I thought it showed for 19 and 20.
So I guess it's a labeling, I believe the second one is this year, so whether he's looking at it as 19, 20, we'll make sure those are consistent.
Okay.
Yeah, so that one.
Thank you.
So total attendance is at 1608. I'm buying a chart of that, but I don't know if that was next, but. You also have the report, you also have the report of Special Education Director Dr. Early, she is present. If you have any questions, you have 264 students with IDPs as of January 19th. And she continues with her teachable moments.
So is the keeper of the individual school attendance numbers in the big chart different people?
The big chart comes from the individuals as well. Are you trying to match up?
No, I just, we seem to have, always have like, we're always off, I was curious, are there like piles in two different places?
Well, we've talked about, I don't know, happened previously, but changing the best words, not necessarily you need to be on the principal's report, and we'll just put it in one spot, so we don't, because I often look, and if it doesn't match, then it's else, or come into life, doesn't match.
The tennis vortex.
So the next report is from our athletic director, Matt Chivary, and it's already been highlighted, our boys are in the tournament, tonight is game one. But some of the highlights are gymnastics teams qualified for the sectionals for the sixth time in the last six years. Senior basketball captain, Ashley Calliver, scored 1,000 points. She actually ended her career with more than 1,000 points. Mashpee found with senior gymnast Hannah Benet made a Massachusetts senior national team, and that team only selects the top 18 seniors in the state, and that they will be going to Florida and may compete against other states. And also from that team, in addition to Hannah, Ava Kelly and Ava DeSimone also qualified for state high school individuals in gymnastics, and Ava, the two Avas, I believe, are ninth grade, they're definitely underclassmen, so that's pretty good. And then the highlight, I mean, the update on the very bottom one about A.J. Gaboni, he actually came in ninth out of 24 competitors in the long jump. He was the only underclassman in that competition, and he had a personal best long jump of 21 feet, three inches. So he is a promising future. Next, you have one, multiple community, five, six pages, which are related to our outreach directors support, Consuelo Carroll. And one thing, I think, if you're looking in the volunteer engagement column, some of the things that really have been enhanced or greatly facilitated because of Consuelo's work, is the MMHS Science Fair, she was very involved with gathering the group of judges for that event, as well as for the National History Exhibition Fair, she was very involved with that. This Friday's Civic Career Event is also something that Consuelo has played a key role in, and so I just see some of her, and very impressed with, within a short amount of time since she came on board, the impact that she is having on the district and on families. One of the things that's attached here too is this Mashpee Volunteer Newsletter that she has created, which we're going to start to make sure is included in my weekly emails. She does send it home to her, or communicates it to her current list of volunteers, but I think that's just a perfect example of excellence that she is showing. So there's a lot of good things to read, and just also, we put it in there as just an FYI, but tonight, there was a lights-on after-school event that is hosted at the Boys and Girls Club, but it attracts resources for families from across Cape, and she chose to become involved in having Mashpee Public Schools table. She's going to have school choice information with her, she was having the Camp Falcon Flyers as well to reach out to anyone that may not have received it, who's already part of our Mashpee family. And just some other brochures informing about all the schools, so I think that was a nice thing to hop on to. Any other thoughts or questions? Just some good data on her, on her social media presence. There's some good data on her, on her social media presence. Any questions on that?
I just had a quick question on page eleven, the chart with the hours. What does that represent? So cases, six, Casey, Chris, thirty-one, Quashen, one oh five, uh, uh, PHS, one twenty?
I think those are volunteer hours.
Yeah, what are you?
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
But you're right, you can't wait until.
If you could just have a little bit, whatever it was. That's what I assumed, but last time I assumed you weren't having.
Okay. Okay, so I was going to do a little student enrollment update. So we already know what our current number is. And just, just for my own checking and for your information, of our sixteen hundred and three students that we currently have, one hundred and sixteen of them are choice. And they come, I'm not checking, sort of Barnstable sends us forty-seven, followed by Falmouth sends us forty, Sandwich sends us fourteen. And then the single-digit senders are Bourne with three, Dennis Sharman with one, and Bedford with one, Quinnes with two, and Wernham with eight. A total of one hundred and sixteen.
Does it significantly mean?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I'm wondering whether it was someone associated with us prior to. And then in terms of students or Mashpee residents who are choicing to other districts, there's a hundred and seven of them. And the, the three double-digit districts that our kids are choosing, fifty-six go to Falmouth, twenty-five go to Sandwich, and sixteen go to Barnstable. And then single digits, we have one at Montanoi, five in Bourne, one in Nossett, one in Dennis Sharman, one in Rockland, and one in Bedford. And then we did sort of a, a look at where some of the other Mashpee resident students are going. We already know that we have forty-eight students at Cape Tech. We have fifty-two at Sturgis, well, Mashpee Residence. They may never have been ours to begin with. We have thirty-one who go to Pope John Paul or St. Francis. So that's the five through twelve range, because St. Francis goes five through eight of them. We have ten at Falmouth Academy. And then there's, there's ten that go to St. Pius, which I know is more of an elementary level. And then there's various small enrollments at the North Shore Montessori, St. Margaret's, Tabor, Bridgeview Montessori, Bayberry Christian, Trinity and Waldorf. And then Cape Cod Academy, there's fifteen Mashpee residents who go there. Christian Academy is one. So that's sort of, we have eight students who are homeschooled and six students who are attending virtual schools.
Is there any discussion in the Planning for Success meetings about figuring out a cool goal or objective to decrease those numbers? Because, you know, roughly that's about almost three hundred people.
Yeah, not yet in terms of the strategic. We did have, when we did our visioning, one of the visioning for Mashpee and Public Schools in twenty twenty-three was that all children who live in, you get ten Mashpee families. That was our vision piece, but we're not even, we're not to goals.
Well, of course not. Yeah, I get it. I'm just curious.
But yes, that was, that was a discussion for sure.
Was that maybe a significant chunk of kids?
I guess, do we know out of the hundred and sixteen that choice still, how many of those were former students who are continuing now?
I don't know it right now. I do know after, I always look at the names, so I know. And I've made that statement before that many of our school choice kids were ours to begin with.
Right, versus us attracting students from, say, Falmouth to Cape Cod.
And we have talked about that, like in terms of wanting to make sure more of our kids stay here and also who can we attract is developing a marketing campaign around that.
So I know it would be on a purely voluntary basis, but do we have mechanisms already in place to find out why some of the families choose to choice out of Mashpee? Is there some kind of survey or anything that you can get asked?
We don't do a cer, we haven't done a survey in the past or an exit interview. Some things are shared, but in terms of a reason. I know that some, I believe some this year chose neighboring districts because they did not want to start later.
Okay.
A handful.
Yeah, yeah, so curious, obviously, some of it, we're not going to be able to stop just, people just want to go to certain schools. But if there's an offering or something at another school that we potentially offer here or things like that, that seems to be a trend, it'd be nice to.
And sometimes, I mean, I don't want to lose any student to, to another district. But sometimes the, whatever, the fit hasn't worked.
Yep.
And we could do a better job of making sure we're proactive in that. But I know some of the applications we get when kids are choicing in, it's usually been sort of some challenging social situations for the kids. And so they're looking for a fresh start in the sentence. And they've been super successful here.
Of the choice applicants, do you have information offhand in regard to remember that we did not have placements for?
There were only a few in this current year that, that I'm thinking of two that did not get a place.
That we didn't have that.
And, and they weren't, one situation was not necessarily the place, but there were some other things that needed to take place in the other district first, on to need that students need.
It's not like we didn't have space.
No, and, and just to share too, what our practice, particularly at the high school level, is we do a family interview with the student and their parent and Principal Balstrachi and myself to sort of get to know the student so we can make plans for them to do a successful experience at the university. Okay, next up, you do have a new packet, some of our running record, yes, of our partnership meetings with the Mashpee Montanoi Tribe. And one of the, one of the meetings that we had that I don't think is reflected on our set of notes, was it was the principals and Hope and myself with Roxanne and, yeah, Lilian, who is an elder, and trying to be collaborative and proactive when looking into attendance concerns for Native American students. And so we put some, some other steps into the, the order of operations, so to speak, that will involve tribal elders and the tribal support pieces so that we can help students. But there, there is a lot going on. I know it also lists here about the June meeting being at the Government Center. And I think at some point we were going to, we were talking about whether we're going to have it in the school. But anyway, it shows us being at the Government Center. And we already acknowledge that Roxanne, you know, she is on our strategic planning, maybe part of our planning for success, and then also serving on the principal interview committee for the school, which we're very appreciative of. And so some of the things we're, we're still planning to get done this year do require a piece on, on some tribal representative side. So it's not, it's, it's going to get there. But we wanted to include this because we, we really have accomplished quite a bit in basically doing the Government Center.
I'm curious.
Absolutely.
Any questions? So then like little Camp Falcon update, you have in, in front of you or in the packet, what was sent out to our families. And just so that you know, in terms of budget, it's, we have forty-five thousand dollars in the budget to cover Camp Falcon. And based on the offerings and the staffing for those offerings, that totals thirty-five thousand, thirty dollars. So we have for supplies, nine thousand nine hundred and seventy. So we definitely, I would anticipate the under, well, obviously we wouldn't do it if we were over budget, but under budget. And then the other thing about all the offerings is if the, if they're, Mrs. Lico, thank you very much for all of this work, is Mrs. Lico. And she is now recording all of the submissions that families are sending in. But if something that's on our list doesn't have interest by students, it won't run. So then that person will be notified, because they all know that they only are employed based on the interest level. But we do have of interest this year is volleyball, which is great. The two volunteer coaches who did the volleyball program in the fall are going to be doing it all four weeks. We did make Camp Falcon only four weeks this year instead of five. And we also shifted it up because the DPW really needs to do some deep cleaning and, but they have been able to, based on this schedule, we're out on a Wednesday, August fifth. So they have pretty much a good amount of time to address all that they want to do up there. So I appreciate the collaboration because originally they did not want us to hold anything at the high school for Camp Falcon. But it's morphed into the need for having the maker spaces and the culinary and things of the other schools. Anyway, that's that. Correspondence, I would actually like to read the letter that's in here since, for the television audience. This is a letter that we received January twenty-fourth from Matilda Ligon. Today I witnessed the most memorable educational program celebrating cultural diversity at the Mashpee High School. Theirs attributes and advantages of diversity and inclusion in America received focus onstage during the course of the program. Positive and encouraging were the words that were spoken to the audience by the presenters. The presenters were students and staff members who themselves represented a cross-section of the population of the United States as well as Mashpee. The entire audience was profoundly attentive and courteous. Courageous indeed were those students who spoke from the auditorium stage of their and their family's American experience as recent immigrants. The multimedia program reflected creativity as well as honest reality. The guest speaker, Mrs. Pamela Shatterton Purdy, enhanced the overall outstanding event with her exquisite artwork display. She offered explanations regarding the American civil rights history, which inspired her to create her vibrantly colored icons. After the finale of an enjoyable learning experience, I left the Mashpee High School with a strong feeling of great hope for the future of Mashpee High School's current students. They are transitioning toward adulthood in a learning environment where tolerance and respect for differences among people should comprise an integral part of their overall formal education. I firmly believe that this is an essential part of the preparation for their life's journey through the ever-changing multicultural world beyond the confines of Mashpee, Massachusetts. Commendable indeed are the ongoing leadership efforts of Ms. Aphrodite Purdy, health education teacher, and all of her Mashpee High School colleagues, who directly participated in the organization and implementation of a program that focused on accepting and respecting inclusion and diversity among students at Mashpee High School. I personally believe that the collaborative work that is developing between the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee and the Mashpee School District serves as a model of positive, nonviolent initiatives for all school districts throughout the United States. Today's program achieved its goal without compromising the dignity of any person onstage or in the audience. I earnestly suggest as a resident of Mashpee that a student-staff diversity program be incorporated as a consistent component of the Mashpee High School's annual calendar of events. So that was very nice of her to take the time to provide that feedback for us. And then I also have the Mashpee Senior Connection Newsletter, which you probably don't miss.
We do know.
But on the front page of it, I just want to share that the Mashpee Culinary Experience Monday, March second at ten forty-five AM. Join us for a surprise culinary delight prepared by Mashpee's future celebrity chefs, the Mashpee Middle High School. Come learn about the Mashpee Middle High School Hospitality Pathway and watch as these students demonstrate their cooking skills using state-of-the-art induction cooktops. Then sit back and enjoy a culinary favorite. Mashpee seniors only, please. So this is an event where our Pro-Strike troops are going over to the seniors center, which is this Monday. So that's. And the last thing I wanted to share, and I'm not sure if you knew or not, but the Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito just made their announcement of the two thousand twenty Skills Capital Grant Awards. They awarded fourteen point six million to fifty-four educational institutions. Thank you to Dr. Hansken and her team, because we collaborated on this particular grant that we've been awarded, but the bulk of the work is on her desk and she's very good. So the Mashpee Public Schools is receiving two hundred and two thousand one seventy-five. The school district is creating a health services clinic space at Mashpee Middle High School. And the grant will outfit a lab space within the school's technology center with the necessary equipment so students can be certified in health and medical assisting careers, including certified nursing assistants, home health aides and medical assistants. The equipment will also create opportunities for the middle high school to offer adult training programs in the evening. And part of these pathway and these skills capital grants is partnering with community partners. So we have Laurentide as a partner. We have the Community Health Center as a partner, for those of you.
People.
People Healthcare as a partner. So that's, we have a few. So that's pretty exciting. That was just released yesterday and bargained today. So that's another news pathway and a great funding source for us. So I'm very excited to find out.
And we're glad that's awesome.
So that is it for my section there. Do you have a paper section?
You're right.
Do you have a question?
I do. So just on that grant, which I assume you'll come next year?
No.
This year?
FY twenty.
FY twenty. So how will that change any of our current curriculum?
So for this Skills Capital Grant, creating, it's a Skills Capital, so you don't write your curriculum into it, but our plan is to offer the CNA course for students next year. And so one of the partnership pieces from the Community Health Center is their nurses will, their trainers will come over and provide the medical, the CNA training for our students. And that's their sort of in-kind contribution, because they're desperate for employees, especially anyways.
So that, so that would recur during the year?
It would. We currently have an early childhood class. We also through HOSA, we have opportunities that exist now that we can implement what, I think the first year will really be just figuring it out. The grant, this is the second Skills Capital we got in FY twenty, actually. We got the first one in the first round. This was an extra batch of money. The requirement is to implement, put all of the equipment in before June thirtieth. The curriculum piece is not tied to it. It's not a, a formal pathway. So for FY twenty-one, we'll spend the, the year figuring it out, is my answer to you. And then we'll come to you probably and say, hey, we want to add this class. Or hey, it can be encompassed into this class that exists. But just getting the equipment in place is really the number one priority first. Did I not answer you?
No, you did. So just to clarify, you're going to spend the rest of FY twenty figuring it out?
No, FY twenty is buying the equipment, getting it installed, doing any renovations we need to. FY twenty-one, we'll offer the programming, but how we offer it will probably be a pilot. And so we won't come to you in September and be like, hey, we want to run this class. We'll do it as a pilot, see what makes sense. And then for the program of studies for the subsequent school year, we would.
FY twenty-two.
Yeah. But we're going to use it next year. It's just not going to be, the curriculum piece isn't formally finished. It won't be.
Okay.
Because we got, we got to try it and see how it goes.
And it'll always be partnership trainers?
They agreed in their, you know, letter of support. Um, I, I don't think, I, I don't control them, so I can't guarantee that. But yeah, they, they, people couldn't get in line fast enough to partner with us because they are desperate for, for health services employees. And it actually, can I tell a really quick story about how this happened? We went to the award ceremony to get the first capital, Skills Capital Grant at the end of August. And on the way up, Mr. Balstrachi, Mr. Rooney, Mrs. DeBoer and I dreamt together. And we were talking about aging parents and, you know, supporting them and, and how difficult it was. And then at that award ceremony, they announced the second pot of money. And we all looked at each other and we're like, okay, we're going to. And we all looked at each other and we're like, okay, we're going to. Because like, we, clearly there is this desperate need, especially on Cape Cod for health services.
And that's great. So you expect the grant to be exhausted with just the renovations and the equipment? Will that be able to support the pilot as well?
The pilot was written in. So the curriculum materials and all of that, it's all written in. The equipment, what, the way we wrote it was, I got a quote for all the equipment we want from Medline. And so it's just like with the innovation, the advanced manufacturing. We buy the equi, we purchase the equipment with a PO and they pay the PO, you know, they pay us back, however that works. Mr. Funk is your man.
Yeah, that's right.
He comes in my office and is like, Hoppy, when are we getting the money? But.
Well, I'm fine with it. Special commitments and stuff. It's a little different than other grants. We actually, you know, we actually write the grant, we got the equipment, and now we're just waiting for them to send it in. We have a commitment.
Checks in the mail?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you sound like my, like what you said.
So I mean, we know it, but I'll go in here and say, you know, where's the money?
No, this is awesome. Can't wait to hear an update later once you guys have kind of figured out on the pilot.
Yeah, we're first like, where are we going to put all the equipment that we ordered before we get the renovations done? So it's really just a matter of like getting it all in logistically before the end of the semester.
And you know, a lot of the equipment comes in and I know they're still waiting for, I talked to this woman the other day. They're still waiting for another piece of equipment. Because I said, when you get this all set up, I want to take a look at it.
Oh, for the advanced manufacturing one, yeah.
Yeah, the first one.
Yeah.
You see the equipment that's going.
And just so you know, the only other Cape school district that received one of these grants in this round was Boston High School, giving sixty thousand. And then Cape Cod Community is doing an EMT type of a thing, and they received two hundred and fifty thousand. No other colleges persisting. I'm to Mashpee.
There you go.
We can walk out.
Exactly, exactly. All right, Mr. Funk?
Okay. You have in your packet the budget to actual. Moving along, no problems. I'll entertain any questions on any of the budget to actuals. There's a couple of areas that are still fluid, the out-of-districts. We've got some changes coming in and going out, so you'll see those figures change next month. We've got a couple of large hits on out-of-district transportation, as you can see. But I'm just kind of waiting to see how the out-of-district tuitions, I think we're going to pick up some money in on this transfer. But that was a couple of exceptional hits this year. Moving on, any questions? Moving on to the grants. The, as you look down here, we have the grants that we were just talking about, Innovation Pathways. We did receive that. Ten thousand dollars was awarded. We received it. We spent it. And that was like preparation for the two hundred and fifty thousand that we got. Where you see we haven't received it yet. But we're doing it in batches. The state is doing it in batches. So that means that if we didn't get it at the end of January, we should be seeing it very, very soon. And you also see the Innovation Pathway Grant Two, forty-seven thousand three eighty-nine. And that grant, we do get funds on that one. And we draw down on a monthly basis. That's part of the total grant. Grant, they call it grantania, you know, with the state software package where we can draw it down on a monthly basis. So as we expended, you know, we're drawing it down. So you're going to see that change.
Maybe we can start to adding whether it's the advanced manufacturing pathway or the health. Right. We don't have help on here.
No.
We only had the one, but once we get more and more of them.
Right. I don't have that one in yet because that was released today.
I know.
Oh, okay. So I didn't want to put it in there too early.
No, thank you.
Okay. Just one point, and I put it into this first time, is the FY nineteen Medicaid reimbursement. Last year, we received three hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Well, we didn't receive.
Well, you know, I'll go back and I'll defend the town a little bit. They give it to us in the budget, so it goes back to them. The services to students. Any questions on the grants? Moving right along, I have talked to the powers that be as far as spending down the revolving accounts. And talking with the athletic director, we're going to put, I was just, he called me today about, he went out, he got three calls to put fencing in front of the tagouts, you know, so that people in the tagouts, because it's getting very dangerous now for foul ball. So we're in the process of doing that. And now to come out with a revolving account because we really need the budget. But there is a need for, we had a discussion, that's who we're going to go with that. So, and he said, he's spending it down. He'll have that spent down pretty much by the end of this year. As far as the community school goes, we will spend that down. But I leave that, you know, I won't spend it all the way down because on that community school, we run our summer school out of that. You know, we have to run all the courses. And a lot of times, you know, we don't get enough kids, you know, revenue to fund the cost. So that helps us out. And it was another, it was another thing we're doing that we're not, we're able to do that. But that's what that community school, or we buy the software to that too, which is about twelve thousand dollars a year. So that will get reduced.
Well, we also talked that the possibility of down the road or when there is money, of offseting part of Camp Falcon then.
Possibly, yeah, we could possibly do that. We could possibly do that. Right now, we're all right with the funds, so I kind of want to use you as, as the school committee wants me to use the appropriate funds for us to close up at the balances at the end of the year. The lost book account, you know, I tell the principals that they can take a look at that. And they can use that as software for the library, library books that everybody needs. So that's available to them. The preschool sped account, that, you can see that's going down each month, almost ten thousand a month. So that, we're bringing in revenue, but on the same token, it's kind of going down. And then the school choice, I have a separate document for that, as I always do. The non-resident tuition, that's the high school, he has that to use on anything he wants. And then the bottom here, they've got, those are grants, our school's career. Those are monies that we use to run our hashtag, We On Mashpee. And that KCC donation, the principal is well aware of that. We just bought another two hundred dollar donation. As you can see, that's going down.
Here, real quick, the athletic agencies. I was curious, since we didn't get the, any love for the fields, is there any discussion about financial storage? You know, that was a big point of contention. Or do we even think that's how it works?
No, that would be something that we could look at. I mean, about them to get for storage. But that is related to, at some point, the conversation about our next steps in the progressive field. Like I want to get a committee together of booster boosters and then plot out a strategy and.
On the next page, you'll notice that school choice, you can see the school choice, we're receiving sixty thousand twenty-six dollars monthly now through the rest of the year. And you can see that the balance, less the floor, less the expenditures, less the mini-grants, less the five hundred thirty-eight eight sixty-five offset to the budget. We have three hundred ninety-six thousand five oh three. As I, as I just said a few minutes ago, the committee has instructed me to use all of the appropriation before we use like choice money to close out anything that, you know. I think last year I turned back some to the town. I'm not planning on doing that. So we're in, if you turn, if you turn to the, I probably should have pointed this out. If you turn to page twenty, twenty-five, which is kind of the, of all the appropriation. If you look at all the appropriation and you go down to the expense side of the budget to actual, and you notice it is a negative one twenty-one, three twenty-seven, eighty-four currently. Well, that's part of the five hundred, supposedly part of the five hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar offset. But I'm watching the salary. There seems to be quite a bit of money in the salary. And I will definitely do a report next month where that revenue is coming from in the salary. Basically, it's the ELA position that we didn't, right? Did I get that right? ELA?
Yeah.
Position that we didn't fill and some of the higher. And some of the positions we did not fill, there were a couple of, I know there's at least one position we didn't fill until November. So, you know, somebody retired and we didn't fill it. So I'll give a full report on that. You're going to find there's quite a bit of money that was offset the one twenty-one down the, you know, we're still spending here. We're still going to pay bills, but it'll offset that, you know. So I'll give a full report and you can see where we're getting it. Because it looks, it's a good year.
Next, Meehan, can you give us an update on the two of seven that's been incurred out of choice?
Sure.
As far as what actually has.
Sure.
I have that going. I think I have a little section on that.
Okay. But on the same, we're gone.
NPS innovations update.
Is there a name after it?
We have not, we don't have.
Okay. Just, just, just so to make the comment on those mini-grants, the student mini-grants and the teacher mini-grants. They're being charged to the, to the budget, you know, because they're going to be offset by the, by choice. It's going to be offset by choice. But again, the way it worked out last year was excellent because what we, what we did was we basically only backed out what we needed to, to close out the accounts at the end of the year. So I'm running it the same way. So I'm running those mini-grants through the appropriations. So that, yeah, they're part of the one twenty-one or whatever. But it, you know, if we don't use that money, we can look forward, you know. I'd really like to get that high school library done. You know, I don't want the town to put the carpet in the CIP and then pull the furniture out, put the new carpet in, put the old furniture back. So I mean, I'm just.
No, it's.
A heads up.
We're coordinating that there on.
All right, we'll work on that. I got the zing there. No worries. Okay, thank you. And the last piece, I do need a vote, and that is the transfers. And these transfers are just to take care of the negative amount. It's just a matter of moving money. It's not going to change that bottom one twenty-one.
Move for a true vote of transferring about twenty thousand.
Second.
Motion by George, second by Chris. Any discussion on the budget transfer? Mary Ann, George, are you up?
Yes.
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 Yes, unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That ends my report.
Thank you, sir. We turn it over to Dr. Hanscom.
All right.
I think he's going to turn today.
Yeah, I wrote this a month and a half ago. So I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of what we've been doing with curriculum this year. And really, my Quashnet friends did the bulk of it by going over wonders because that's, at the elementary level, been the most significant work we've been doing. I thought they did such a great job that I'm going to just leave it at that. If you have questions, though, certainly I can, I'm happy to answer that. We have applied for a grant for implementing a program called ST Math, which is spatial temporal math. And this grant is through the Math Stem Hub. ST Math, it's a visual instructional program that builds conceptual understanding of math based on neuroscience. And this is the third year that they've had this Math Stem Hub grant. And I have, you know, we have been piloting it, Mary Kate and Paul's schools. And we're really excited about it. So there's two rounds of the grant application. We passed the first round. The next round is due March tenth. And if we get the grant, then we get the full implementation of the program, all of the software. We get three days of professional development. We get a whole slew of things for three years. After the three years, we then only have to pay thirty-five hundred dollars a year to maintain, which is not like that's licensure. That's nothing. We pay, you know, we have other things that we pay for that. So the only thing I'll say about ST Math, and it might be, I don't know, Paul, do you have a share out coming up?
What?
For school committee?
No, I'm done.
You're done? I was thinking it would be really cool to see Stephanie Suze's first grade kids sort of demonstrate. So it's math games.
We have the power to add that.
We do, but I don't want to, no, no. I'm so sorry.
How can you do that?
But even if we did a little video of it, it might be cool to show. But it's these math games, there's no words, there's no language involved at all. It's all pictures and there's no directions. So the kids go on and they have to, they're presented with just a situation. And it's Gigi, this little penguin that has to get across the board or whatever. And there's, they work it through, it's that productive struggle and figure out how to make it happen. And then if they get it wrong, there's a visual representation of how. And it ultimately builds from symbolic to, I mean, from concrete to symbolic. It is, it's an incredible program. And I, I don't know, Mary Kate, if you want to add anything to it?
I think the students are enjoying it. They are looking forward to their ST time. They want to do it at home.
Yeah.
I think it's easier for the students to understand almost than the teachers, the adults. It takes a little while to figure out because there are no directions, but.
And teachers aren't, so if a kid says, I don't know what to do, the teacher is not, what do they have to say? If they don't say, I don't know what to do, what have you tried? That's the only cue you're allowed to give as a teacher, which is, so you'd think the kids would hate it, right? They'd be like super frustrated. They love it. In fact, my fifth grader, my son, his birthday was Monday and he got a new computer for his birthday because the old one broke. And when he opened it, he goes, can I play ST Math? And I was like, oh my God. You don't want to do like Minecraft, which is like your thing? So anyway, long story short, this is a supplemental program that would go on top of everyday math. It's thirty, sixteen minutes a week for K one. And then ninety minutes a week for grades two to six. But you do it in sort of bursts and so forth, so.
I think with our, our kids, they're still at the discovery phase of that. And there's this dialogue. So a lot of them are doing it at, at the center of time. So they're like, I'll be working on it at the same time. They're not working together, but they're discovering things. And they're like, hey, did you see how this does this? So they're having this dialogue as well as working on their own independent struggles, so it's pretty exciting.
And I think what we're excited about too is it supplements, everyday math has really good pieces of it. I don't think we need a new math program. I don't think anybody would say we do. But part of the challenge with math for our kids is the conceptual piece, is understanding what the math means. And this is a really powerful supplement to that, so. So that's ST Math.
Yeah. Real quick. I was under the understanding that next year, that that's what the curriculum review is going to be, is the math program?
Right now, the, let me just look at my five-year curriculum. This is the beginning, this is the conversation year for math. Next year would be a needs assessment. But I'm just saying generally, I don't.
Right, but, gotcha. Does ST math, can it supplement any math program?
Yes, oh yes. It's, it can supplement any or none. It is not a program in itself. So, so that's, I'm pretty sure we'll get that grant. I, they work really closely with us. And so it seems like it's a good chance that we will. So that's exciting.
What you got, Mary Kate?
One of the pieces with ST Math that I do think is a fabulous thing is. One of the pieces with ST Math that I, I do think is a fabulous thing is even though it's online and it appears game-like, there are no prizes, there are no levels. They are just focused to get that answer. And it's, it's really different. They're not like setting up all these little things and buying...
Outtars and...
Yeah, outtars or buying little gimmicks or getting rewards. It's more intrinsically satisfying for them. And it's, it's a nice change. So it's somewhat game-like, but it is not like a video game.
Well, but, and it's more motivating than the video games. We went to New Bedford, to an elementary school in New Bedford, and saw kids K to five working on it. And they were incredibly motivated to be on it when there was really nothing except learning. And what is the, they say, "The only thing you get when you get it right is harder work."
Right, that's it.
And they're super into it, so.
They really are.
All right. So elementary social studies, we are integrating, so you heard Mrs. McKay say that one of the requirements for our pilot for ELA was that it had those two furs and three furs. And so one of the pieces of elementary social studies this year is seeing where in wonders it, it layers over to the new standards, and then also integrating a vertical progression of practice standards by grade span. So that's really the, social studies for the last, this, last year, this year, and the year after will be really digging into those new standards and implementing them. And then for STEM, we're at full implementation of the 2016 STE standards. But we're also shifting, kids are taking the MCAS for STE online this year for the first time. So that is something we're working on with our students. So that is elementary. At the middle high school, the English and Social Studies departments, we are continuing to work on vertical and horizontal writing, language, and expectations. This is a much bigger job than any of us probably thought it was, but our ultimate goal is to make sure we have common expectations for kids in writing across all the curriculum areas. And so that's what we've been working on this year with English and Social Studies. We're implementing the Innovation Pathway, which is that advanced manufacturing pathway. And we had, last I heard, twelve students enrolled, which was about where our target was for year one, which is great. We're meeting with Cameron Greendier and John Hanlon from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe this, no, it's next week, to talk about how we can encourage students, Mashpee Wampanoag students to enroll in the Pathway, because they're the College of Career, what's the word? They're in charge of College of Career for the tribe, and so it's a really great fit, I think, for that. In terms of skills capital, so we have purchased all of the advanced manufacturing equipment, and almost all of it has been installed. And then, as we talked about, the health services skills capital we just received, so we'll be purchasing, we're gonna have gurneys and hospital beds and light, you know, the call buttons. And there's, I wasn't gonna go there, but yeah, an ambulance simulator. There's a lot of really cool opportunities that we're gonna, and so I think our kids are gonna be able to walk out of here, if this all goes the way we think it will, with a CNA or even a medical assistant certification, which is incredible, you can walk into a job. So that's exciting. Our media arts teacher, we are working with Mashpee TV to get some of those funds from Comcast to support equipment that she needs for the curriculum and for implementation of the Mashpee Minute, which is the once-a-week little news show that her students put on. And so we met with Mashpee TV, and Mrs. Fraser provided them with what she needs. And so we're still in the process of getting that through that, through that funding source. And then we're in the first full year of our e-portfolio rollout at the middle high school. So every student, grade seven through twelve, has an electronic portfolio, an e-portfolio, that has work in all of their classes that ultimately they can leave with. At the same time, we're implementing MyCap, which is from DESI, and it's the My College, I, something like that. It's, yeah, it's like an individualized learning plan and, and planning tool for kids for post-secondary. So the MyCaps are going on to the e-portfolios. And that's been a real easy, every kid does it, and every class does it, and the kids have this work, so that they can really reflect on their growth over time. So that's pretty exciting. So that's the middle high school. And then from the district level, all the curriculum groups, so the elementary and the middle high school, are using the problem-solving protocol that, under our MTSS framework, to analyze assessment and performance data and have made plans to address gaps. We are working, the high school created, under MTSS, a sort of more streamlined system for supporting students who are struggling with social, emotional, and behavioral challenges through the MTSS model, and particularly catching kids sooner. And then the elementaries, the two groups, the two buildings are working together to create the same model down here. So that has been really helpful in getting more kids supported. This year, we fully implemented the DESO, which is the Universal Screening for Social, Emotional Well-being. Every child was screened in October. The kids who bubbled up were also screened in January, and then every child would be screened again in May, June. The screening is done by the teacher. It's not the student filling anything out. But it, like the STAR, will help us to look at individual students and look at what their needs are, but also aggregate data around how all of these grants and all of these sort of SEL interventions were doing, how they're working. So that's pretty exciting. We implemented COM Classroom, which are three-to-five-minute mindfulness activities that every teacher has the manual for. And sometimes they're done over the loudspeaker, so everybody's doing it together. Sometimes I'm just studying in class. Collaborative problem solving, so a huge group of us, I think it was twenty-five, became tier-two trained in the Think Kids Collaborative Problem-Solving Model. And then Dr. Curly became certified in the model, and I'm getting certified in the model, so then we can train our staff in how to use collaborative problem solving. I won't get into what it is right now, because that's a longer conversation, but it's just a way of dealing with, supporting kids. We partnered with the Massachusetts AG's office and brought in the Sandy Hook Promise that Skylar talked about. That's a two-year process, so the first one was this year's start with a low. Next year, there'll be another assembly, and there's a student group working on, on that as well. And then Dr. Curly and I were trained to be mental health first aid providers, trainers. And we did, we completed our first training in January. And I think we had twenty-eight of Mashpee's staff members become certified mental health first aiders, which, and it was, the sessions were from four to seven at night, and people weren't paid to come, and we...
It was a great course. They did a great job.
And we'll run that again this spring, and we'll run it in the summer. Hopefully, the next thing I was gonna talk about is a grant that I just submitted yesterday from DESI for behavioral health. One of the things I grew in was that Jamie and I could become trained as youth mental health first aid trainers, too, so that we could provide both trainings to people. So hopefully that will happen. So yeah, there was a grant that came out from DPH and DESI for behavioral health supports that was submitted yesterday, that will hopefully receive approval. That's an FY21 grant. And then we found out about an hour before we came down that another grant for DESI that, a competitive grant that we wrote in December for digital literacy and computer science, we were just awarded today. So it's professional development for growing our own computer science teachers. So taking the teachers we have and giving them the skills and the tools that they need to be able to implement, not just the intro to CS that Skylar was talking about, but all the way up through AP Computer Science. So that is my, wow, longer than we thought, update, but some good stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is subcommittee reports. I don't know if we have any subcommittee reports. Anybody have any, anything to write on?
I don't see any.
You want to reply?
Nope.
And then we didn't have any working group updates, except that I know that Sujana had a comment about the family opinion survey.
So all I wanted to point out was, so this year, for our third annual family opinion survey, we partnered with Panorama Education. And this year's survey went out yesterday, around five-ten. And there's forty questions in the survey, and each household receives their own specific link. And if you have more than one child in more than one school, you wouldn't receive two separate links. And then the only other piece was that if you had two children attending Quashnet, you are prompted to respond from the perspective of your oldest child's experiences. And just checking on Panorama today, or whatever time I did that today. So we have, this is not the percentage, anyway, one-hundred-and-eighteen overall responses, and twenty-five Mashpee Middle, forty-four Quashnet, Coos is twenty-one, and we had twenty-eight responses. I didn't get the sheet for the percentages. But anyway, it will remain open, and we will be sending out reminders as well. So hopefully, we've had good responses.
I took it last night as a camera, and it's very fast and not difficult at all. I took it on my phone in case anyone's watching. It's really not a super-heavy lift to...
The government...
I don't know.
No, I didn't. I don't know if you did.
But what you, you get, each one, you at least get one. One, you should have got one.
So if anyone's watching and you didn't get a link, and you should have, please call the Zoom attendance office.
Yes, please. That happened to last year.
Yeah.
So did you, I know when Panorama sent me, on Monday night or Tuesday night, Monday night, I think, telling me things were good to go, it was in my promotions folder. I haven't looked there. So look around, scan promotions, or if it's, if it changes.
Awesome. We do not have any specifically assigned or unfinished business, so move to new business. And the first thing up for that is our FY22 calendar, being very proactive this year.
Well, you were proactive last year, too, because you did two...
That's right, we did.
So this is not next year's, this is the year after.
One thing I know, it's starting before Labor Day.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, this fall as well.
I didn't think that.
Yeah.
But we didn't this past year.
No, because we had the Quashnet project and all of that.
Well, Labor Day's super early. We're late into twenty-two, I think.
Yes, right here.
Six.
Yeah, six.
Yes, six, so, yes.
Okay.
You good? Let's change the calendar, it's not important.
I guess, one, one question I had was, when you go to November, the early release on the fifteenth.
Well, versus putting it somewhere else or not having that on?
Yes.
Well...
Versus either one of those options.
Well, we felt that the first was too early, and then the eighth makes a very choppy week with Veterans Day. So at least when you have four full days of learning in that week.
I guess I was wondering about the twelfth.
The Friday?
Yeah.
Well, there again, we have a little bit more on flexibility with our staff when it's on Monday. It's an extra hour, isn't it?
You can't do it on the twenty-third? I'm just curious, I'm just asking, I mean, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect me, unfortunately.
I've been knowing the full day until...
The full day, yeah, I got you.
The only thing I would say about the twenty-third, although that might be, I, I think it would prompt poor attendance on the twenty-second. Why would you, if you were gonna go somewhere as a family and you're gonna grow the facilitator background?
You see, October eighth, the Acap, Professional Day.
It's, the Acap Professional Day is waning, I would say, in terms of its effectiveness and, and the participation of many districts. It, it provides an opportunity, really, at this point, the only people who participate from our district and most districts are sort of more the outlier educators, PD teachers, some of the counselors, art teachers, they have some specific things. But we use that day as a day-to-day.
So what's the reason that we're including that three-day, four-day weekend?
It is also Acap Day. I mean, if there is going to be Acap offerings, it's, it's gonna be that day.
It affects a really small part of the district, doesn't it?
Well, it, it affects, yeah, it's not the bulk of our teachers.
I've been saying, the last three or four years, the reason we do this on that day is because of Acap Day. Acap PD Day. Because we've talked about this day every single year for the last five years.
Well, and I think, I mean, as for families, it's a four-day week.
No, it's awesome. No, I'm just...
It's nice.
Exactly. I'm keeping an open mind here. I'm not saying anything.
It's a shorter Christmas break in twenty, twenty-one.
And then, March eighteenth?
We've always scheduled a full PD day in March, and it's usually around that date. This year, it wasn't going to be on the twentieth, for example, but the primary, presidential primary election being on the third, we made that change. But that's not going to be the presidential primary at times. We prefer to leave it.
So is there overlap between what's happening on the seventh and what's happening on the eighteenth in March?
Are you asking for us, for our plan for PD in twenty-twenty-two?
Of course.
They could be, they could be related, or they could be totally separate experiences.
Okay. Unless they're related. Okay, nevermind. It's, it's just, we're, you have half a day off. The kids have half a, half day, one week, and then the next week, you have the, the full day on the thirteenth.
And why move to, uh, move to approve the proposed twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Mashpee Policy Calendar?
Second. Who did you...
Motion by Chris, second by George. Any further discussion?
Sorry.
Do we, I mean, is there any expectation that there may be a contractual change that's gonna make us redo this again?
Yes.
I don't want to point out that the next calendar, we do that, we do that.
I can see.
That's good.
That's good. This is, sorry.
Oh, no. That's it. No further discussion. George, are you up?
Uh, yes.
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 Yes, all right, unanimous. Sweet. Update on Planning for Success?
So, and then we hit a little bit on that, although you could just briefly, we had our first larger group meeting, and I know Dawn is part of that, as well as we call. There were seventeen stakeholders there, and there were others invited as well that didn't make that first meeting. So when we go to do the next large group meeting on March tenth, Gail is going to reach out to Menaslops, because I'd like them to hop on board if they still are available. And one of the big activities we did during that, it's a half a day when we meet as the big group, was this envisioning the future activity, which was, you start with Mashpee in twenty-twenty-three, and you sort of write down everything that you are, you want, that the schools are. And then you also do a similar activity that's present tense, and then you go use past tense for where we are now. So it's a different, it's a little bit of a different mind shift. So those ideas have all been sort of combined. And today, we had a smaller leadership retreat, which is just Principals, myself, and Hope with our facilitator. And we looked at all of that's on that list as well. And then we also participated in the SWOT analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats specific to planning and implementing the plan, not generally about the district. It was very specific. And so then on next Tuesday, March third, similar envisioning activity, envisioning the future activity, is going to be, take place for each of the staff, school staff. So in the morning, we are doing some emergency drill practice. And then they'll be, sort of, I'm gonna frame this work, and then they're gonna do something similar to what the seventeen stakeholders did. And then we're gonna be able to combine all that, so that they, their voices are a part of it. And we have not gotten to a point of sort of goal direction... And, um, we have not gotten to a point of sort of, uh, goal directions, but there are certain themes that they are running through the work, which, um, you know, inclusion, uh, student-centered innovative learning opportunities, empowering student voice, kind of, going through a lot of that, um, envisioning in the future. And today our conversations, we worked on, on that SWOT analysis and, um, really have some big, um, ideas there too. So we'll update you after the next meeting, so probably on the eighteenth, because we have had the big group meeting on the tenth of March. That's that, the MPAS of Innovations Update, just to end, um, through this.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's okay. So the, you've seen both of these sheets before. So the first one, that's the smaller, yes, the single page, is some of the, uh, proposed uses of school funds that were, you voted on on the twenty-first of August. And I think the only, um, so the mini grants, those have, there's a little bit of money left for the students, so just to go hand in hand with this page. If you look on the last page of this two-pager, the things in the sort of melan color, those are the student grants. And so you'll see that we were up to three thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars out of the five thousand. And granted, when the actual things, orders are made, they could be off a little bit. So we're, that's where we're at with that. The return of the twenty-five thousand to the food services revolving account, I don't know if you wanted to address that, Mr. Funkel.
Which one?
The twenty-five thousand that was removed from the revolving account. The, whether that, what amount of money are we going to return to the, um, food services revolving?
Uh, I'll, I'll report that out next week.
And I know that we've talked about it in the past, that of the equipment being purchased is either only up to eleven or fourteen thousand.
Yeah, eleven thousand, eleven thousand four hundred dollars.
But we also will have, um, sort of a financial six-month or maybe seven-month at that point analysis of the food services department. And one of the things that you'll see that hits in that, over the graph, but the, um, you know, the fact that they continue to pay, they have to pay their employee health insurance out of their account. And that through December thirty-first for a six-month period is twenty-eight thousand three ninety-five. And then Medicare is thirteen oh one. So those are like two things that everyone else in this district is from the town side. So we really do need to figure something out with that because that really isn't expensive to an account that really scrapes itself, scraped by. And it would be in a much better financial situation if that wasn't part of its expenditure.
That, that's a big impact on, on, uh, I've, I've worked in districts where we paid the salaries and we paid all the expenses, but I don't, we usually pick that by the time.
So I don't know if there's other groups that work for the town.
Like the childcare.
Or the RAC department people. They usually don't.
I mean, they're enterprise fund. Because that's what we said now, food service fund. Because they're an enterprise fund?
They're just a revolving.
Oh, okay. I could be wrong. These are wrong terms.
Anyway, it's worth it.
No, the, the town, the, the RAC department, that, that was an enterprise fund. We see that on the town.
Gotcha.
Right, that, that, that. This, this is just a revolving, so you don't see that.
Gotcha.
So the amplification system for this library, that's done. Uh, the innovative classroom furnishings, just, um, we have, is it just the one teacher so far that's given you?
No, I have all of them.
Oh. So they created their list and then they've sent it to Paul and Paul is pricing it out for them. So that's moving along, that, we want that to be something that the current students with those teachers get to experience this year. The amplifying systems are done, that was at twenty-four thousand. Uh, the, it was added to six thousand dollars for security, which we ended up, as you see below, we used for the halo systems. The teacher replacement desk just says in FYI, so they, teachers have until Friday to finish or to respond to my Google form, but as of today at twelve-thirty, there is a total of fifty-two desks requested and fifty-three chairs. So at, um, Coombs?
I'm not answering this question.
Oh, uh, quite a few, so, so, a lot. That's, that's a great math term, is it?
That's the official term.
Yes. So, for example, I'll, I'll just use Coombs, so. Twenty-seven staff members have responded, twelve would like a new desk and fourteen would like a new chair. Not necessarily paired up.
Right, right, right.
So based on, you know, hopefully by Friday everyone has responded and then I think we're in good shape for, you know, I was just talking to Mr. Funkel, parking even, even if, you know, the desks are around a thousand or a little bit more, that's fifty-two thousand right now for the desks. And even if you put in like, say, two hundred for chairs, that's ten thousand for the chairs. So we'll, we're underneath the, um, eighty-eight thousand that we put in here. So, but I know some of the feedback from teachers is, you know, they really like a standing desk for, so I want to get something that allows some flexibility. So you can, maybe it doesn't go up and down all the time, but if you really want it up, you can have it up and, um, it, it's just funny, there, there was a comment section on the form, so it's, it's really enjoyable reading. Teachers that are retiring like, well, you know, I'm, I'm fine with my chair, but I think the next person might like a new chair and like.
Well, there's also those things you can put on the desk that raises everything so you can stand and it's not a problem.
I, I believe there are desks you can buy as well.
Yeah.
And they're definitely interested in making sure whatever they're new, they want something that locks, has a couple of drawers that lock. And, um, so we should have information by Friday and we're going to go with what we have and, and we know all, where all the rooms are and who they are and what they want, but we can't, it's probably not going to be as individualized as you might, you know, it's not. We want some sort of, let's decide on this, hopefully it has flexibility for what we need and we're getting fifty-two of them. And then same with chairs. I personally would like something that you could make taller if you wanted or down, but I'm not looking at, um, more expensive these cars, these chairs. We all want a.
The chairs are the best.
Well, I think the more options that the piece of furniture gives you, the more money it costs.
I would think so. The other side of that.
That's the update on the furnishings and then the water bottle fillers are done.
Yep.
And they're great. The sensors are all in at the bathrooms and they are, um, working well. And that's it.
Awesome.
And then just sort of, if you want to look at this chart, you've seen it, but those are the teachers with the innovative classroom furnishings and then all of the approved teacher mini grants that, um, are underway.
Awesome. So the next thing on the agenda is the school choice program participation. So they've done a little bit of a change at the Commonwealth level, that we don't have to go and vote every year anymore to continue school choice, but we do have to do public, a public hearing and a vote to get out of school choice. The expectation now is that all of the school districts in the Commonwealth will be in school choice. Um, so the reason this is on here is just to discuss it and if anybody would like to have a public hearing to get out of it, then we need to set that up. And otherwise it's just a kind of matter of consensus that we're going to continue with the program.
So do you still have to vote on the number of positions?
We don't have to go on that.
You never have to.
Yeah.
We're going to share with you what we're recommending. And you already changed the policy whenever we did that recently because we used to have our windows spelled out. And so just for your information, the first window is currently open until March thirty-first. And we are receiving applications as well. We, we've publicized it, not in the newspaper, or, so we're only, you know, people, but, um, and then based on numbers and, and, and resources and faculty, we're proposing forty-seven new seats for next year. K would have four, grade one would have four, none in grade two, we're actually going down a classroom here. Five in grade three, ten in grade four, two in grade five. There's a possibility right now we're recommending two for grade six, but we've been discussing other issues related to next year's sixth graders, so if we were, we may increase that school choice number. Five for grade seven, eight, nine and ten, and zero for grade eleven and twelve. So it comes to forty-seven.
Awesome.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a neat change.
Question, just of a, a point of curiosity. If a family moves out and they have a student, the following year they can, you, um, apply for school choice to come back here, are they given a priority or a preference or is it just in the pool and out comes the number?
No, they, you really can't give a preference. It has to be, be there. But I think also some of the other districts and, you know, we're saying, okay, we want forty-seven new seats. There's a little flexibility, so maybe based on changes over the summer and we know we have room, it's one of our students, instead of coming to you for a tuition reimbursement, let's just put him in his choice and then at least we get some time with him. But we, we definitely try to take care of it, we're one of our students who wants to remain with us.
And the Mass Law is pretty clear on no giving any preference.
No preference except for, uh, siblings.
Sibling. I was just a question asked me. Do you know the exact names? So thank you.
No, you do, my friend.
And just on, are you looking at the next segment?
No, I was going to see if you were done with, uh, school choice. Upcoming dates?
You have this sheet which is, um, pretty comprehensive, sort of, definitely heavy into March events and will continue to enhance it as you improve, but if you are able to participate or attend a civic state event, it's a very short window there, that would be something I'd want you to do. But just an FYI, I think you all know about it, our budget presentation to FinComp is next Thursday, March fifth. I'm sorry. At six P M. tonight, do you have sample folders that will be handed out as well? Are you not there yet?
I said I could go the twelve, but they changed to the fifth and I can't.
I'll be there. Are you going to, are you going to let it stop this time?
Based on that, tell me.
I was going to until now, right?
My response was the opposite.
They passed our budget last year.
They want to talk.
Yes.
Who would, I'm just teasing. Who scheduled this time for the service day?
Well, it's.
It's a class.
It's Sean Corey.
It's odd at nine twenty-eight.
It's a class, period.
It's not odd if you're at the high school. It's odd for most students. But anyway, definitely look at that and add anything to your calendar that you want to do.
Thank you. So items that shared in that reason, we know in advance, I said a couple of quick things. One, the budget presentation will be March fifth at six P M. Just in case, I'll be there, please, uh, come and support. I forgot to ask about the curriculum plan. Is it possible to throw that into the matra gen or have that implemented somehow or at some point? We build it, like, build it with the curriculum. So, um, I'm going to be, I'm probably going to be, we're going to probably throw it on the next agenda, talking about the spending plan or the, we need to start talking about what that spending plan is going to be, the ones to do.
Oh, I have a draft, yeah, I, I do have a draft. And the reason I didn't go further with my draft is because they're sending out.
We should be getting a template, right?
A template in March.
In March.
Right.
Thank you for speaking there.
But you will definitely be, um, reviewing it at the March eighteenth school community meeting because it has to be put in by April first.
All right, there you go.
Yes, that's on the list.
Is that on the addition, I don't need that.
Yeah, that's on the, the new changes to the student opportunity.
Right.
That's the additional funding.
Yeah, I understand that. But if it was a certain amount, did you have?
Well, there's, there's two different templates. So we're going to get the little bitty template, sort of like a five-page template for those who had a much larger.
We get the short form.
I think the short form is like a page or something like that. They were talking about the legislative breakfast. Is it three pages? So they lied to me and.
But from what I have is the only change or increase from our FY20, chapter seventy to FY21, chapter seventy is about forty-seven thousand dollars. I'm so glad I was correcting that.
So we have to spend, we have to spend three pages to determine how we're going to spend that forty-seven thousand dollars. Copy, paste, my friend, copy, paste. Okay. And then I just wanted to put that the mask also came up with interim guidance for pandemic planning. I was talking to Patty about this, uh, earlier. I meant to text her, they're already talking on CNN, telling everybody to call their schools and ask about pandemic contingency plans and stuff, so I'm just waiting for our first email or phone calls.
Well, we, we definitely also have a directive from M A S S and I think I said to you, we've had a couple of parents, this was not, this was more like two weeks ago, specifically asked and in coordination with the nurse court, with our nurse coordinator as well as DPH, we responded to that parent. But in tomorrow's weekly email, and probably for the next few weeks, we'll, we'll put information to address that. Hopefully people read that weekly email.
I do.
Me too.
I do too.
Thank you.
I do.
And so anybody else got any last minute comments before we move into our last public comment? Awesome. Do we have any new public comment? No. So I will entertain a moment, uh, a moment. I will entertain a motion to enter, to adjourn, enter into executive session and not adjourn. We have a motion by George in a second, by Chris. Any discussion? Any vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right.